First, 2023 at 5:01 PM. For the role of Councilmember Skoyak.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bamanjo here. Councilmember Soyo, please excuse. Councilmember Nichols here. Councilmember I like to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Okay, communications from the mayor including this brutal message. Communication from the public and petitions.
Number one, notice of claim from Justin Prostowski. I'm sorry, Prostowski? We got it. 560 Leopard Street for damages done to his right front tire allegedly due to sewer pipe near the entrance of this driveway.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, number two.
Notice of claim from Gladys Lockett of 8 East Pine Street for damages caused to her vehicle allegedly due to side swipe, inside swipe by a city of Dunkirk ambulance.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, number three.
Notice of claim from Thomas Tarnowski of 10 902 South Roberts Road for damages caused to his front tire and rim allegedly due to deteriorating sewer drain on Townsend Street.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, number four.
Number four, loudspeaker permit request from Jason Schranz on behalf of Bart's Co. Marina to use amp speakers and microphones for live bands from May 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2023 from 1 PM until 1 AM.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilwoman? Councilman?
Great, thanks for taking here. One of the issues. I like it.
Okay. Councilwoman Nichols?
No, not here.
All right, maybe nothing. Uh, unfinished business, none, sir? Uh, prefiled resolution 18.
Resolution accepting donation for police investigative services.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, new business? None, sir. Can I have a motion for adjournment? And Nichols with the second five, Bamanjo. Councilmember Skoyak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanjo?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember I like to be here.
Aye.
adjourned. Okay, can I call to order the public hearing for the city of Dunkirk CDVG Public Wi-Fi Hotspot and Sewer Cellular Device Charging Station Installation Project?
Thanks, uh, just as a requirement for this grant, we have to do a second, second public hearing at the end of the grant. These are available online, a website down in the clerk's office, so a lot of you have seen it, so I won't go on in detail. There are comment cards and signing sheets up here. The public can comment on this project till midnight on Friday, the 24th. And after that, we'll take all the comments and send everything on to OCR. So just a brief recap of the project. So this is something, uh, it's through OCR, so we have our CDVG allocation for our, our community entitlement program. On top of the CDVG, OCR, Office of Home to Community Renewal, is the actual office that allocated the funds out of the CARES Act program for 2020. A lot to do with COVID and being outdoors. We put an application in back in July, did a first public hearing then for, for the project. And it was to install Wi-Fi hotspots, solar charging stations at the Point Pier at LA Park. And then just according to what we needed to do, we did the first public hearing back in July. People could comment to see if they wanted us to do anything different on application. Put in our submittal, got the funding, and now we're completing our second public hearing. So project accomplishments, we, uh, we installed the Wi-Fi hotspots, repeaters. You probably see them down there at Right Park and Point Gratch, so now the entire parks are open for free public Wi-Fi. So the idea behind that is the public could go down there, have free access to Wi-Fi in the event that there's ever another, if we ever have to go, you know, remote again, people could have access to schoolwork and job applications and things like that. And then the solar charging stations, we had two put in at Point Gratchet, one at the Dunkirk Pier, one at the Boardwalk, and two at Right Park. So those, you can, those are solar charging stations. You could plug in your phone, your laptop, charge it up in case you needed to do that while you were down there and using the free Wi-Fi. So the benefits, the, uh, we have 12,156 residents that will benefit from that. That's the population of the city and, um, the, so I was making sure that I've got everything here. So, uh, the total project that was awarded from OCR was $103,500. You could see what we did with that. We installed Wi-Fi repeaters, the equipment, the stations, and then we also have a five-year service plan to supply the Wi-Fi down at the Point at Right Park. So the actual project cost at the end of the day was $104,147, now it's 11 cents. So it was about a $600 committed in the city for that. And the benefits that, as I explained, free public Wi-Fi for, you know, citizens to enjoy in the, also charging up their devices. And then I took, added some pictures of the locations of where the repeaters are at the point in Right Park and the solar charging stations and our great DPW crew installing those. Lastly, if anybody from the public wants to comment, you have, uh, three minutes if you'd like to comment on anything on the project. If you don't want to publicly comment now, you can do a comment card or send me an email. Anything from the public question, anything on the project?
Is there any password for this thing?
Nope. It's open, just go down, pull it up on your phone, and you can connect right now.
Type in N O P.
I'm gonna put that in there. So seeing that we don't have any comments from the public, we can close the hearing.
Can I have a motion to close, please? And Nichols can have a second? Can I have a motion to close, please? And Nichols can have a second? Let's call to order the regular meeting for March 21st, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
He's excused.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large D'Amico?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice at all.
Thank you. Okay, communications, or I'm sorry, certification of the prior meeting.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, was presented to the mayor Wednesday, March 7th, 15th, 2023, pursuant to section 3.03 of the city charter. All items presented to the mayor now in full force and effect and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, May 8th, this 21st day of March, 2023.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? Someone, I have Councilwoman Nichols with a second and by Councilwoman Lescoviac.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes. And to any person representing a group, who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or are slanderous or non-germane to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified above shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or start it before such time has expired.
Privilege of the floor is now open. If anyone, please like to speak, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Tom Logan. He said he'd bring it up the next meeting, which he never did. So I went to see the councilman-at-large, and the only thing I got out of councilman-at-large is the fact that I know he wasn't in the military. Okay? I walk in his freaking small room over there. He's got his feet up on the desk, his hands behind his head like this, and he wouldn't look at me or basically talk to me. And I wanted to slap him because if he was in the military, when he got his bearings back, he would have got up, sat down with his feet firmly planted, and looked at me like an adult.
Okay.
But anyhow, nothing happened.
No. Okay, sir.
Much gone.
For things that are on the agenda, I would be happy to talk with the outside about the concerns that you have. I know we've talked on the phone, and I did provide you with that information.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah, so if it'd be all right, can I talk to you out there and, you know, because maybe some other folks want to talk about things that are on the agenda?
Well, what, all I want to do is, is, it's not right-taking and having everybody vote for all the freaking districts because...
Would anyone else like to publicly comment on anything on the agenda? Going once, twice, three times, privilege of the floor is now closed.
Thank God.
Communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to request a, as of respect for the town of Dunkirk supervisor, Richard Pearl, who passed away, 30 seconds. Moment of silence?
Absolutely, sure.
That's all I have. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, communication from the public and petitions.
Notice of claim from Justin Kristowski, 516 Leopard Street, for damages done to his front right tire allegedly due to sewer pipe near the entrance of his driveway.
Any discussion, counsel? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to refer to the law department? I have Councilman Bemanto with a second and by Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number two, notice of claim from Gladys Lockett of 8 East Pine Street for damages caused to her vehicle allegedly due to being sideswiped by a city of Dunkirk ambulance.
Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to refer to the legal, the law department? Councilman, or Councilwoman Lescoviac with a second and by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Council-
On Townsend Street.
Any discussion, counsel?
Randy, has that sewer drain been repaired on Townsend Street?
No, it will be though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to refer to the law department?
So moved.
I got a motion by Nichols, a second and by Bemanto.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number four, loudspeaker permit request from Jason Schrantz on behalf of Bart's Cove Marina to use AM speakers and microphone for live bands from May 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2023, from 1:00 PM until 1:00 AM.
Any discussion, counsel? Okay, I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as prove subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions. I have Bemanto with a second and by Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions, Councilwoman Lescoviac.
Working, it's a county road, so we did most of the work ourselves, but we're also interfacing with a county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one announcement, there'll be a finance meeting Tuesday, April 4th.
Yes, when the Superfund Altech site was demolished on the Lucas Avenue side of the railroad, there was a drain that's not connected up to the top of the hill. Once we reconnect that, that water that flows off of that site just hits drainage, and it just, it makes its way onto the road, and there's a receiver up there. If we could repipe it, we tried to do it last year, but it was full of poison ivy and couldn't get up there to do it. So it's not our, not our pipe, but we can go in there and do that and get that off the road. I'd like to do that.
Is it, especially when it freezes, it's a little, a little slippery on that corner.
Exactly. It's drainage water. It's not, it's not a water line leak. It's drainage that's running through that property.
The next question is, when I was out this weekend visiting people, I had a concern on the many potholes in the city of Dunkirk. And everybody seems to think that they have the answer on cold patch or what, and if they could just do that. Just, would you please, and I know we've had this discussion numerous times, on the pros and the cons of cold patch?
Sure. The, even though we've had, knock on wood, relatively light snow in the winter, the freezing and thaw and wet cycles have caused the potholes to be very numerous this year. All it takes is a little bit of water to get in and then freeze, and those of us that are old enough to remember a milk bottle left outside, it'll burst about, so the pressure of freezing water will, could probably lift a tank, so it takes apart our roads. And so we have more than usual, and we're putting cold patch in now because the hot plant doesn't open till the first part of April. The hot patch is the permanent patch that we can then pave over and make it all smooth. Cold patch only lasts about two weeks. So if people got, see a big dangerous pothole, call it into 366-4411. We'll put some cold patch in, but chances are we'll have to address that with a hot patch again in a couple of weeks when the plant opens up. So that's pretty much the difference. It's cold patch, pretty much gets you by for the winter time best you can until the hot plant opens up again in April.
And the last question I have, and I know Jeez isn't here, we've had the discussion on, my concern was Doty Street repaving, and Jeez's was for Newton Street.
Yes, the state has special funding for federal aid highways, and because Newton Street and Doty Street are truck access routes and eligible for federal aid funding like West Fourth Street was a number of years ago, those can be reconstructed without city funds by using federal funds, but it takes a process. That engineering technician, Andy Bone, has already started, so we hope to be able to do curbs and all new ramps, driveway ramps and sidewalks for the full length of Newton Street and for the full length of Doty Street. That'll be a multi-year application and then a multi-year construction, but it's in the works. And eventually Doty Street and Newton Street will look like West Fourth that was reconstructed a number of years ago.
Thank you. And I have, I don't know if, Michael, if you want to come back up and I see. And I don't, I don't know where to go with this, and I talked with Kate, our paralegal today, and she said I might want to address you tonight, or the chief, of what we can do, and I talked to Randy about it. People not putting their trash out the way they're supposed to be, it's making our city look terrible. It's clogging up our receivers. We're getting complaints that the water's not flowing, but it's because when they put their trash out, they're just throwing it out. It's not bagged, it's not barreled, it's not anything. Is there anything we can do as a city to enforce it? Because it's on our curbside calendar, the proper way to get rid of their weekly trash. I just, it's an eyesore, plus it, we don't have outside custodial service that's going to go around sweeping up their stuff, so I don't know where to go. Especially with the high winds that we've been having of late, so I don't know. If you want to do some research, or you want to address it here, you've got the-
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Nichols. I think what I'd do is I probably want to talk with Mr. Woodbury and also the mayor. I mean, certainly there's things that can be done. I think one of the first things I might recommend, though, with the-
I think one of the first things I might recommend though would be, I know that we provide that information now, but there may be some other things that we could be doing that would be helpful just on a notice basis to begin so that folks are certainly aware of what's necessary. And then we'll get some other things as well. But I think that education piece really could be valuable again, you know, remind people that this is what's most appropriate and this is what we need and, you know, we take pride in where we live and our city. So, but I'll talk to the mayor and also Mr. Woodbury.
And I think if we try to stress the importance of recycling, because there's so many milk containers flying around the city in the wind or pizza boxes, but I know pizza boxes can go in the regular recycling, they cannot go in the cardboard because they're contaminated. And the last question I have is, does anybody have any information of what's going on with the macaroni building down on Lake Shore Drive? Is there any update on it, Vince?
We're still working with developers. They're trying to put together a, a plan, a project there. And Mr. Bob Seen and I are working directly with them. And our counsel from Dunkirk Industrial Development Agency from Harris Beach, Mr. Bob Murray. And we have, again, we have, within the past two weeks, we've been in direct discussions and they're, they're trying to make it the numbers work and trying to find a way to do that.
Thank you. That's it, chief.
Thank you. Uh, the one thing I want to bring up is on Thursday, the 23rd, at 2:30 in the mayor's conference room, will be a personnel meeting.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Coming up very shortly is one of my most favorite times of the year. April 2nd, we go from daily back to weekly parking on Sunday. So just to remind everyone, we go back to that, change as close to five as you can and we'll stay that way till November. But I know everybody loves this time of year, especially me, and we go back to weekly. So just a reminder, we go back to weekly on April 2nd, Sunday.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business?
None, sir.
Uh, prefiled resolution 18?
Resolution accepting donation for police investigative services.
Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, D'Amico?
Aye, carried. Number 10, new business.
We have none, sir.
Uh, can I have a motion for adjournment? I have Nichols with a second and by Councilwoman Lyskowiak.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, D'Amico?
Aye, we're adjourned.